Got it?
Yeah.
All right. On May 21st, 2018, those who submitted was transmitted to the Board of Education and the copy of Vegas exonerated at the education center board of work. Copies were also transmitted to the billboard individuals item, Star Ledger, Wilbur Short Hill, the Credit Press, Pat Bowles, Short Hills, TP 36, and House of Report. Members of the House of Committee, President of the Community Board Association, from Flagman. All right. You guys in everyone, welcome to the board of educators annual forum. To give you some background and context for those of you who may not have joined this forum in the past, here is the setup for the next two hours. The forum is a board meeting without a predetermined agenda. So I went to other meetings where we have an agenda that we're following, we're not doing that today. This is important forum, important discussion with everyone here. Members of the community are invited to come to share ideas, ask questions, and use your word in the administration. Unlike the regular board meetings where we don't have to make comments, this meeting allows for dialogue between the head center administrators and the board members.
You can't hear?
Yeah.
Yeah, bring it a little bit closer then. Closer, is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I will preside over the meeting and recognize the public who will come to the podium to share their ideas. If a question is raised, I will address the question and other board members can add to the response as related to the work of the board this week. I will also look to Dr. Burden, Mr. Arlington, Mr. Snyder to react to their responses as they do. Please also share potential solutions as well. These are helpful as we evolve into a situation. Please note that there may be questions raised that require us to look into them before answering, before answers given, so don't feel as though your question won't be addressed. We will post topics and any follow-up responses on our website after the forum as a practice. We did receive about, very recently, about forty questions via email. So what we're doing is, we're gonna let everyone here ask the questions and, you know, during times where there aren't people that are asking questions, we're gonna go to our list of almost forty questions and answer the ones that we can answer today. We will however address all these questions that we received on the website after the forum, it's important future, hopefully, whether that's a few weeks, but we will address them. So with that, are there any questions?
So would you go to the podium?
There are, yeah. This is the podium.
So if you have a question, please go to the podium and like other public meetings if this one.
Yeah. Please say your name and your address, please.
Mitchell, uh, yes. Mitchell Raitt, 44th Thackeray in Short Hills. I had actually submitted a look, a question also on this topic. It's relating to the hours, scheduling hours for when schools start for the high school. And I'd like to know where we are with that project because I know that over the years there's been issues about logistics and I think the term that the superintendent used was holistic approach to this issue. The more that we learn about the damage to the health of our kids and older kids, I think we become more negligent in not moving forward quickly and making those changes. It's not just a matter of busing. I know that's an issue, you know what, elementary kids can get up, high school kids need to be given the same type of acknowledgement of the health issues. And I think we can't keep studying this issue. It's beyond that. We're a very forward-thinking school district and I think now is the time we need to move forward. And, you know, if it means a few buses here and there, we're pretty imaginative folks here, creating promptly addressing. But we can't sit on this anymore. So I'm putting this out there. Many school districts have made these changes. They're not the type of insurmountable issue that we don't face every day. We're not gonna keep bad food in the school if we think it's gonna cause obesity, right? We're not gonna let children drive if they don't have licenses. We're not gonna do a lot of things that sound maybe on this extreme and somewhere easy, but I really want that to be one of the topics that's out here now. About a year ago was the last time I decided we're gonna look into this again. And we gotta stop looking into this. It's already been looked into. What are we gonna do to move forward?
I don't think this is working. So we, you hear me?
Yeah, pull close to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I guess talk, I'll take it on here, but it doesn't sound like.
Right into the microphone in order to be right into the microphone. Your lips have to touch the microphone. Please.
So, I would agree, and I think my predecessor talked about the development of holistic. And it is a, it is a question right now being addressed at the high school with the work of challenge success. If you've heard, we've read about, I wrote about it, Dr. Meyer wrote about it with regard to the work of, out of Stanford University, Dr. Diddy's focus work has in fact the research behind, older kids need more time, sleep deprivation, what its impact on the brain studies, et cetera. And so the work that we have already embarked on, so not just studying, we've done actions. And part of that has been in terms of giving kids time during the school day to be able to, so we've done our first step foray into looking at the schedule and how we structure time in school for kids, is to look at the time that we have in our school day, the extended lunchtime, the extended time, almost hour in the day. That gives kids time to connect with teachers, to be able to do club activities, study, research, so that they're not having to do it on the back end after school, because they have a lot of activities, such that we're giving them that time, if you will, that they can begin, that they can have time to sleep. But also, the next sort of phase is looking at how do we maximize the extended lunchtime. But then also, how do we, because what the thinking being, the actual, one option out there is, how do we take the elementary time and flip-flop it with the middle and high school time as possible?
So Dr. Burden, can I just jump in or maybe ask you to expand a little bit on what the challenge success initiative is? If you could talk about, you know, what it is, the timeline for it, and, you know, when that will wrap and in terms of what it will produce in terms of initiatives that we may look to implement?
Sure. One of the things you wanna be able to do is, and I would speak to, you do wanna be able to make sure you make the right decision about what's right for our high school and not just simply because other people have done it. So one of the things that challenge success, this is the work that we are joined with two teams, one at the middle school and one at the high school, and they're looking at their schedule as well at the middle school level with the coaches from challenge success. Probably the next couple of weeks, a survey will be coming out with regard to both students and parents about challenge success, about initiatives, about student life. How much time are you spending on homework? How much time are you spending on extracurricular activities? How much sleep time do you get? And the information that comes out of that study and out of that work really does give us the insights and information with regard that we will be able to make decisions. I've talked to, so that you know, my colleagues under Princeton, as one district, there may be such changes. And I said to him, so how did you, what helped you propel you to make that decision? He said, the work with challenge success was the compelling, the research that you will get from that and the information that speaks to your community is the way that will help you to make those decisions. And they're definitive and they did it within a very short turnaround. So we believe in the work of challenge success and we also wanna be able to make sure, it's easy to simply say, let's just flip-flop and call it done. It's not as, and it sounds basic, it's not as basic as just being able to do it, you wanna be able to make sure you do it in a way that we know what will work. And it's not just buses, it's not just extracurricular activities, there's a lot behind it, so we wanna be able to make sure what we do and when we do, we do it in a way that's thoughtful, that really does have the benefits that we look to create from having done those switches in the schedule.
Just one last, one follow-up, and I know, I still didn't quite hear the acknowledgement that, you know, other schools have done this. I'd like to hear you say, yes, we're gonna maximize the sleep deprivation issue because no matter what these other issues are, I know there are practical questions, but they weren't etched in stone when these times were set years ago and we didn't have that information. I really would like to hear the schools saying, and perhaps this study will show them, that it's vital for these teams and pre-teens almost to be able to get that sleep. I have one of those, I've had two of those, and I'm telling you that some of the studies, particularly about driving and the impact on that, these are really serious. And if you're gonna rank what you're doing, there has to be this ranking up there about health, moving buses and parents' concerns about babysitting. I know they're there, that's gotta be, and I really would love to hear that acknowledgement. Maybe when this comes out, the study, that'll be in the town's year list.
Be sure the health and wellness of, of our students truly are, and I will also agree with you in that the more that I read about sleep deprivation and that we even as adults, even if we don't get seven hours of sleep, we are kidding ourselves when we say, I can only go on five hours. We truly need seven plus hours of sleep. And so if our kids are not, then we do need to. So I want to be able to make, allow you to go away knowing that in fact, the amount of sleep our kids aren't getting today, it is a top priority for us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just one quick thing, Mr. Arlington, do you think you could add to, just for the benefit of the public, the proposed timeline for challenge success, when will that process be completed or when do they expect to be completed and give some of those details as far as logistics?
Sure. So the Stanford training with our teachers and admin happened earlier in the year and now they're working at the building level with their coaches. And then there's a follow-up opportunity for challenge success kind of integration with our schools in the spring as well. But I've been in touch with challenge success about administering the both student and the parent surveys, and we hope to do that in the month of February. They're gearing up on their end. The surveys will include, for students, which should take about forty minutes for them to complete, between seventy and eighty questions, ranging on a host of issues, health and stress, academic worry, sleep, academic dishonesty, teacher support, belonging, engagement, homework, family norms, extracurricular, parent expectations, and some others. So using that data, as a result of that survey, we'll have access to a dashboard of data. It's disaggregated in different ways and will hopefully inform, or hopefully inform, some of the work that the buildings are engaged in right now. But we do have a commitment, Mr. Jack, for, to work with challenge success, or we have a budget to work with challenge success next year too, realizing it's not like a one-and-done festival. Mr. Jack?
I just wanted to add on the topic of the importance of sleep times, just from a board member's perspective, having sat here for six years, I will tell you that the topic has come up for me in all of those six years, we have discussed this headline. So just to assure you that it's not something that is not discussed, not considered important. I think that in terms of making huge adjustments, what I've learned is that we really need the assistance of a group like challenge success, who knows how to methodically implement such change in a way to balance all of the needs of all the constituents involved because it is incredibly complex. And I'm glad that we're finally at this point, after years and years personally of talking about the importance of, you know, later start times for our, for our teams. So I just wanted to balance that response out for you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Good, sir, you can, I'm sorry, you can just go up in the podium. Good, sir. Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, good, yeah.
I need to say, what's your job, continue to try it, right? This is just a follow-up to this question because I have been hearing about it and been really waiting. I still did not hear the answer of when is the implementation expected? You need to be working backwards from some, isn't this fall, the starting of school year? Isn't the next, next fall? So what is the expected timeline of implementing of the new schedule? And I would like to do both for middle school and for us.
Again, in terms of, again, it's time to mention that we have, we don't have that, but what we, at this point in time, but we anticipate to be able to speak to, let's put a line in the sand in terms of when we will and work backwards from there. As soon as we do have that, we will share that out. But it's at this point in time, I mean, it's pretty quick for the fall, but certainly for the fall of 2020, this is definitely a possibility.
With challenge success, that's kinda like what we own this, kinda, there are things that are happening right now, they're in motion. So after that's completed, that's when we'll be able to, like, that timeline for you. Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Barishaw, Seventeenth River Road, I'm also the president of the Millburn Soccer Club. So I wanted to just bring up a point about the fields in town and sort of see where the board of ed, for the most part stands on. You know, it seems as though for years, there really hasn't been any improvement or anything done. I think this is a topic that falls under the board of ed, according to my knowledge, about, you know, I know there's probably a limit on room, right? There's no expansion, there isn't room. That's, that's for the most part understandable, there's things that we can do and figure out. But, you know, improving the current situation, whether it's at the elementary schools, middle school, there's almost been none. And really, really the high school, the back fields, the rep department does a great job, does the rep job, the rep department does a great job allocating times to, you know, and I'm not here just on behalf of the Millburn Soccer Club, I have a high school soccer player and, you know, the field conditions are, you know, really, really below almost every school that you live like, except for the main turf of the high school, which is, which is great. The back turf is a very dangerous situation, very slippery. And I, I don't really know, so that's why I just bring it up, is I don't know if it's on the board of ed's mind, I don't know if it comes up in meetings. It certainly should because I think ultimately this is the type of thing that can start to impact house values in town, where people decide this is maybe not the best town move because there isn't the field quality. And this all comes on through the, you know, school board. So, you know, I'd like to start that discussion, have a feeling, what you guys are doing, is it something that, you know, there is funds for to, you know, to put turf in the back fields and sort of clean up that? I mean, it's just, you know, the baseball fields, there's been a lot of money put in, which is fantastic. And then sort of corollary to that is, there was a beautiful gym built here at the middle school, but it's, it's unusable. It's really incredible that this was built. I didn't know what was going on, and it's great, looks great, but it's so small. So you, you know, like, why, why would, how much money was spent on this? It's, it's, it's great, lights are great, but it's like a replica of the old blower gym. So, you know, who thought that that was a good idea where there's no room? It's actually dangerous, I think. And there's no room for anyone to watch. So, you know, I think one of the greatest things, you know, that people love in town, you know, not everyone of course, but they take pride in watching their kids play rec sports, travel sports, you know, or just whatever, and there's no room to watch in there, so that I think that won't be able to be used. So I just wanted to, you know, sort of start that conversation and, you know, sort of see where it goes.
Yep. So let's, Mr. Snyder, to answer the question about the turrets, and then we'll go back to Dr. Burden to talk about the gym.
We, there's an organization in the towns called Joint Facilities, which is made up of members from the board of education, the rep department, representatives from the town as well. And we meet quarterly. Basically, we all work together, as you've indicated, the rep department is very good about scheduling the fields. That's something that we decided on jointly, so that there was one organization doing that scheduling. And obviously, they work very closely with the schools to make sure that the athletics are on the fields when they need to be.
And they do, they do a great job.
They do, you know, really is great, keeping that scheduling going. In addition to that, what we, what we work on is the conditions of the fields and certainly acknowledge the fact of the shortage of the fields in the towns. So we do that periodically, discuss what needs to be done. As you had indicated, the main field over at the high school was recently re-turfed. We are looking at needing to do that for Miller Field shortly as well. And when I turn my back over to Dr. Burden, she'll talk a little bit proudly about the capital improvements and the fact that we're setting up a long-range plan that identifies what's needed on the field. But again, doing this jointly with the towns, there's many discussions about trying to find additional fields. If there's any space, we could do it, or taking advantage of what exists in some of the elementary schools, there's just something that we could do there in order to turf some area and do something to, to have additional space. So it's being looked at, but it takes a while and making sure that we meet everybody's needs as we're trying to develop additional spaces for that. So I don't know if that helps, there, there's no specific project right now, the discussions of some potential in the next few years.
Do you think the, do you think the back turf is sort of the type of situation that it should lead a couple of years? I mean, is anyone?
We don't have no reveal.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no. We, that, we're hoping to be able to do that in probably in the next year or two. One thing that we're looking at is the sore pole field right on top of that, the dust from that keeps coming onto Miller Field, that makes it even more slippery. So we're looking to address that at the same time. And as soon as we can have all those plans laid out, we're hoping to have the funds to do that sooner or later.
I think we'll just look at the, you know, next town over at John, maybe, you know, that field, there is no dirt, it's all, you know.
So, so just a huge part of this response, and I just wanna make sure it's addressed, is really having an understanding for how much it costs to turn our fields into turf, right? And the room for that, if it were to exist in our budget or the lack thereof. So I wanna make sure that we're addressing that piece also. So Dr. Burden, I wanna hand it back over to you, but that piece of it is critical and we can talk to that after.
And, you know, and my comments come from fully understanding that there's huge monetary commitment, but, you know, maybe it's the type of thing that needs to, the help to be privately funded, or some of the travel teams in town that use it, whether it's soccer that are responsible for, or other ones, to say, to come to us and say, listen, we wanna do this, we know that you guys want this and need this, can you help? But, you know, I haven't, there hasn't been any, any outreach, so whatever committee that you guys want, I'd love to help out.
Yeah. Just one more thing, I'm the incoming chair for the property committee, and we'll make sure that we start addressing it. I think I'll highlight what Ms. Snyder said, that's really important, is that we're coming up with a long-range plan right now anyway, and we'll make sure that's included, we'll reach out to interested parties. Ms. Olalavi, who's also on the property committee, she's our liaison to that committee as well. It's great to see township members here because that, this is one that we're really working in conjunction with a lot of different people.
I mean, that's, that's great to hear. I mean, but I do, I do think, I wanna make the point, that I think a long-term plan is, I think a long-term plan is great, that's, that's really important, but I think we also need to be thinking, you know, short-term and getting things moving, you know, really just for the safety of the kids. And, you know, I'm not gonna go into that here, you know, probably, probably a bunch of people in the audience don't really care about this topic, and that's a, but there are a lot of people that do, and I think, and I'm just not sure that it's getting the level of importance. You guys work on a tremendously amount, you know, tremendous amount of issues that are, you know, important to our kids getting into college and, and all that, but, but this is an issue that I think everyone enjoys, you know, on a daily basis, whether it's high school sports practice, travel soccer, little league, there's, almost everyone in town is using these fields, and a lot of them are dangerous, and, you know, I really want the appropriate attention and time, like I'll ask you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna get to your second point of question, but there are some, so some of these comments and suggestions, we're gonna take back to certain areas. So we are discussing the falls upon property and facilities, and this Olalavi is the chair of property committee and also the, on the joint facilities committee as well, so, so you know that. Yeah. Thank you. And then, what are your question about the, just about, just about the new, about the new gym, just, you know, like, it looks great, but it just feels a little, you know, is it, is it a space issue? Did we just, you know, is it a, you know, lock coverage issue, you know, things like that?
Okay, so let me, because I had to, I had to advocate for the size of this building, of that facility, because it was smaller than, than what you see today. And so what the architect and I literally pleaded with him, that, so if you can imagine, this space that we're sitting in now was supposed to be, some time ago, a gym. But the architecture kinda got a little bit changed over time, such that a curvature happened, but nonetheless, gym, you know, physical education had to occur in this space. And we said, let's put, in the best we can, a facility that provides for innovation, which we deemed this would be a much better space than we used to do that, and give the facility that the, that the school clearly need, which was a physical education, a gym. And so we used constraints, so that you understand, it was smaller than that, and we said, let's maximize, given it was really a design challenge, you know, parking lots, which you cannot, you have the proximity to this building, and what you can't see is geothermal, that we had constraint of. And so he had said to me, the envelope in which you can build a building is the largest that we could possibly build that space, given the proximity to this building, the parking lot, and the geothermal that we could not get into.
I mean, so it's, so it's, it's kind of the best we could do based on the space and it kinda is what it is.
I do wanna just connect with you on the long-range facilities plan. We have, Mr. Rick, make that, Lou is our buildings and grounds director, is in the process of, he's had a very nice draft in terms of all things within our building, systems, roofs, but also our fields for in and around school district. And of which, the, some of the fields that you're talking about are on there. In particular, the, for example, the field that, the narrow field at the high school was a donation by the community, but then over time, the school had to take on then the replacement and the refurbishment of it, similar to Miller Field. We will have to put as part of our long-range facilities plan, the refurbishment of that because it's coming over time. But just so that you were aware, they do shock tests of that every year, multiple times a year, just to ensure that it has the durability for knees and ankles for our kids. So it is, and so as to, at no time, when you put kids on there where the shock absorbency, if you will, of that is where it needs to be sliding. Yeah, again, as a, as an athlete, I know, you know, you always have a, an issue of, you know, at times, you know, there may be elements of segments of that. But that is, on Miller Field is one of those that we are looking at, as you can well imagine, our director athletics would like to be able to turf as many fields as possible. And I will say to you, the way which we have made, and I wanna give just an acknowledgement to, for example, the baseball clubs and the baseball field, that was a diamond club. That was a private donations, a number of private donations that came to us and said, we would like to, you know, work with the district to be able to make those changes. And they, single-handedly, were able to get the donations and make those. And so we absolutely would work with and understand that we have, you know, architects that are connected with them, you know, our administration worked with the diamond club because they were adamant that we want to be able to, we had people, we had younger kids that are going to eventually take, have the opportunity to use that field. We want to do it for our kids today, but also as our kids work their way through the high school. And so I would, I would offer to anyone who would like to be able to come and work with us to help in the innovation of that, of those, of these projects, we would absolutely like to be part of that.
Well, Millburn Soccer Club represents, probably has more than 500 families in town as members, and, you know, we'd certainly like to help.
I think that also
I think that also just keep in mind that the funds raised by the, for baseball recently was, how much was it? $300,000 that they, that they just raised to...
426.
I'm sorry?
426.
400? And so, and the fundraising efforts were largely spearheaded by Ted Burke and Tamara Corian, I believe. If I misspeak, and someone just yelled it out. And it was an amazing donation that we accepted, you know, wholeheartedly. Ted Burke is also the individual who spearheaded the fundraising efforts. I believe it was 10 years ago. He raised three to four million dollars to turn our Miller Field into turf originally. So, you know, it's, we welcome and agree that our fields need improvement. We need the private, and so this is wonderful. Let's talk offline, and we'll make sure you guys connect.
Thanks for the attention. Thanks for your ability. Thank you.
I think there's a queue.
Would you like to go up to a podium? Kind of it's probably easier if you just get in line or get there as quick as possible.
My name is Alexandra Carnas. I live in 78 Pine Street. And I'm here because I have two boys who are in the Washington School. And I'm extremely shocked by a flyer they brought home on Friday regarding their entry into Miller Field Middle School. And one of the aspects that I'm shocked about is what you're talking about, the extremely early start time. And I'll come back to that. The second thing I'm shocked about is how it was mapped out on the flyer that they have 20 minutes to eat lunch, and then they have to spend 20 minutes sitting in a chair in the auditorium. I'm sure many of the people sitting in this room have had 10-year-old boys, and I can tell you that's a recipe for disaster. It's certainly not a recipe for strong learning. And so I'd like to address these one thing at a time. The first is the early start times. I'm new to this conversation. I'm now informed that this conversation has been happening in the community for about 20 years. So I still don't understand why the start time is so early. If that could be explained to me.
So early in terms of the students in Middle School and High School? So this, in terms of the routing of buses? So we have a two-tiered system in the Miller High School. So they are tiered with the high school, being tiered with the elementary, the middle school being tiered, and with Washington...
And elementary.
And elementary. And so you have a, in order to run buses, the state requires us to have efficiency grades. And so the reality is, you can't just simply have one bus for all the middle school, one bus for all the high school. You have to do it tiered system. So you have to start out the Miller High School routes. They have to drop off the kids. And then they come round to, they pick up the elementary kids so that they can have a reasonable start time. That isn't as much a concern as it is in the afternoon. That same thing, that same process has to happen. And so we have to drop off your high school kids and middle school kids quickly, do a turnaround, and pick up the middle school and the elementary school kids. And so in terms of our peer districts, I mean, our start time's about 7:45, 7:40, 7:45. While yes, we can look to time to after. We have some, we look at this in terms of, what are our counterparts? And others as early as 7:18, 7:10, 7:18. So relatively, you know, in the 7:45 timeframe, can we look to 8:00, 8:15? Some of us, you know, 8:30. But that would mean we have to, as we talked about earlier, flip in our elementary with our Miller High School. And if you were to do, that is one option that has been, has had some conversation about. Based upon how we currently structure our schools, we have our younger, our younger kids starting roughly at 8:50. Would that be a better time for our middle and high school kids to just essentially flip-flop the elementary and the middle?
Yes, I think everyone in this room who's had children knows they're all up at 5:00 in the morning anyway. So the idea of them starting earlier would make perfect sense, frankly, for their circadian rhythms. I mean, it's, it's not anything other than science.
One of the things also we hear are that the middle and high school kids are there to accept kids. They are those, you know, they're there earlier currently. They're there to, so when the elementary kids come home, they're someone to, to be there for their younger siblings coming to elementary. That is something, again, just one of the things that I share with you that I hear from parents, if you started them earlier, they would be coming, kindergartners would be coming home, and their current, you know, let's say, Miller or High School sibling wouldn't be there. It's just something that we, that we put out there. It's just one thing that I just share with you as a, but it would make the time. Parents will have to address that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a working parent. Childcare has been nightmare from day one, and I think it will continue to be for everyone who has to deal with childcare. But I think the mental and physical health of our students takes priority over having a high school student home to meet an elementary school student. I didn't understand in your earlier response when these studies would be in, in the spring, when you would be able to reflect on what the community has said.
So the Challenge Success, we're anticipating that they are, they're the positive, putting together our surveys. And then we'll be having them, Dr. Meyer and Mr. Connolly will be having students actually take it for the school hours. And so they have a pretty quick turnaround. So I'm anticipating probably by the end of February, we'll have all that data that we'll be ready to share out. Simply the information now, what we, how we, what are our next steps with all of that information is now part of the teams that are working with Challenge Success. But we'll be able to, really be able to, probably in early part of March, share out, here's what the data is sharing, is saying with regard to both what our students and our parents have taken the surveys about the topics that Charlotte mentioned.
So knowing that this has been a controversy in the community for 20 years, I think we can intelligently predict that probably the surveys will reveal that most people agree that the school times should be flipped. Knowing that and planning for that, can we not start putting those steps into place now so that we could implement something for the beginning of September 2019 as opposed to waiting a full other school year?
Again, we want to be able, I certainly understand you're, I want to be able to have the data. We want to be able to have that go back to the teams to be able to speak to what is it could possibly be. I don't want to already predetermine what the work of that team and all the logistics of, how do we make that, make that a reality? I don't want to minimize the complexity of, what does it take? And we've just addressed some of the issues. There's many more that we haven't even talked about that you want to be able to make sure you have answers for before we put a, and we announce to the entire school community what are...
What are some, if there are other issues, what are they?
Again, I can be able to, off the top of my head, and being able to, I can hope to address this part of our forum follow-up to give you some of the details as to what we're talking about when you say, "The issue is just not simply flip-flopping the times." We will give you more details on that.
I think it would be really helpful for that information to be shared with the entire community because I think this is, as I said, I'm new to this conversation. But ever since I've learned about it, I have been shocked by the amount of response I've gotten from parents who said they've been trying to deal with this for 20 years, which is frankly not acceptable in this community. So I look forward to hearing that follow-up from you. So then the second thing about lunch in 20 minutes, and then you go sit in the chair in the auditorium. Can that be explained to me? Why can't the children go outside?
Can't be outside.
So one of the primary issue in that regard is having the space to be able to, have the kids be able to go outside.
Can't they go out here?
And then also the process. So what we are looking at, at Mr. Connolly, as a result of the building that's happened here, there is now, actually has been created a courtyard area out here, as well as all this area, to allow kids to be able to actually go outside so they can have lunch for their 20 minutes, then be able to, or even be outside the whole entire time. Actually, the expectation or the plans right now have been to begin the conversation about how about putting tables out so kids can actually sit outside, sit out here, there's room out here, to be able to have kids to be outdoors, get some fresh air, maybe too. But also understand that that area back there is also physical education. So be it that, you know, part of the, one of the constraints of our schools is that we don't have a lot of open area. And so the area that we do have is for our physical education, but that's not to say that we can't even have an area for kids just to be able to go out, sit outside, just to be outdoors, walk around.
So just so I'm clear, the kids are allowed to go outside during the 40-minute period?
Not currently, not every day.
So...
There's a courtyard off the campus area.
There is a courtyard inside of, the kids are able to go outside so they have their lunch, and you can see the courtyard outside. So it's an open-air courtyard the kids can go into. But you also have to be ensured that there is supervision, you know, for kids, when these are young adolescent kids. Sure, I can assure you that a lot of the issues of when things that don't go exactly right is when it's unsupervised time.
So you don't have supervision?
Well, you've got to be able to make sure you have enough supervision is the, is what we want to be able to make sure that we have. And it's also, you know, unstructured, and so...
Amazing! I think our kids are little lab rats, and they could use probably 20 minutes of unstructured time. And if it was outside, wouldn't that be amazing? So what's preventing that? Is that we don't have the funds for supervision?
Well, I mean, you want to be able to make sure you have enough people out there because you have kids inside, you've got kids over there, you've got kids... And to be able to have the amount of, because also classes are happening at the same time. But I can, again, because this has been, and I know Mr. Connolly's one of the first things that I, that we talked about as he came on board is, well...
I think that's the, Dr. Burton, sorry to jump in a little bit, but just to, on that point, since you are new to, your twins, you said, are in fifth grade. You know, the middle school, the longstanding nature of that schedule, you know, the principal at the middle school today is new. So he's been, this is his second full year. Okay, so since he came on board, since Mr. Connolly, I've made the impression already, but since he's come on board, he's started to move the needle in terms of making some of these changes that community members have been voicing for a long time, as you so rightly bring up. And it's one of the things that encouraged me to, why I ran for the board six years ago. Okay, so things have changed for the better. There are more days that kids get to go outside. They have barbecues. I can't list them all. And I think it's important for you, we can talk offline, give you that information and make you feel more comfortable about it. But there have been measures to address it at the school level, and certainly the support of the board behind those measures is, has been there throughout. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure you're aware of that. And I think it's a good thing to talk about with your peers, with us. We'll make time available to get you that, that on the panel.
I appreciate that. It sounds like it's been talked about for 20 years, though. So I'm trying to understand what the roadblocks are.
Yeah, I see what you're asking, but I'll add that, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to add that I actually also have a sixth grader. I also have a ninth grader who went through. And I will say, echo what Emily was talking about in terms of improvements, that have definitely...
Mrs. Chaffey.
Sorry. Mrs. Chaffey, we're talking about, that's been made under Mr. Connolly. I will also say, this year is the first year that they're piloting doing gym every day. So the sixth graders are doing gym every day instead of having one quarter where they pull out for help, which also hopefully addresses some of the issues of having kids actually get a lot of movement in the day because there is a limit on the space available for outdoor time during your regular, or during lunchtime. So I think they're making progress, but we all recognize that there is more work to be done.
So what is the best way for me to follow up on this, then? Because it sounds like the conversation's been happening for 20 years, but nothing's changed.
So regarding the lunch and the schedule, when, yeah, when we went to search for a middle school principal, one of the reasons why Mr. Connolly was attracted to us as a candidate is because he had Happy Men in scheduling. So he has drafted schedules for the middle school already in his cash materials, if you will, for advancing the middle school folk. So whether that's implemented in '19 or '20 is yet to be determined. However, he's working with his teacher teams now to actually pilot some of these schedules this spring. So in so doing, some of these issues should be reached.
And do those schedules require your approval? Or he can change the schedules and do that kind of stuff quickly?
It doesn't require board approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I address something? It's got to do with that?
Yeah, good.
Amy Taylor, Short Hills. I just wanted to add to that that I am part of the Challenge Success Committee at the middle school since October. There's parents, there's students, and there's teachers and administration on that, on that committee. So these are being worked on, and having parents on that committee who want to see these changes yesterday rather than in 2020. I'm a sixth grader and an eighth grader, so I would love to see my sixth grader, you know, take part in some of these wonderful changes. I think it's a very exciting time to be part of this middle school. Mr. Connolly has come in, you know, with so many ideas and passion to hear what parents think, to hear what faculty thinks, to make this place so much better. And it is such a breath of fresh air. And to see his passion in these meetings and follow-up meetings and follow-up emails that he has had, where, you know, he gets back to you, he has, he has answers, and he listens to your questions and your complaints. And so the parents that are on the committee, we formulated a survey that you're going to, all of the school parents will be receiving it tomorrow. And then you'll receive a bigger survey from Challenge Success. But it is up to all of the stakeholders to answer those surveys and to give your opinions because that's the data they're going to look at. So I encourage you to fill out the survey. Our survey isn't that long, and the Challenge Success one is longer. But I just wanted to add that, and as what Cory said, even there's yoga classes even that they're considering for the middle school as well instead of the auditorium time. So there's a lot of stuff, before everybody freaks out and is shocked by what they see, like, I think people need more information to see what's really happening, and they need to know that they're... And, and Mr. Connolly has put out, you know, in emails that there is part of this Challenge Success Committee going on. And he has already formulated schedules, different types of scheduling at the middle school, block scheduling, which we've heard so much about. But he's very, he has looked into all different formulations. He's contacted other districts that have done this and have had proven success. And so he is doing his homework. And I feel confident, and I'm in no position to make any promises, but just part of the committee, and that we are pushing this for, hopefully, the fall of this year because I don't, I don't want to wait. But you have to understand also that the faculty have taught a certain way for so many years. You can't just hand them, "Okay, you're going from a 40-minute class to now a 58-minute class, do it next week." They need training, they need, they need teacher training, and that takes time. We're a public school, it takes time. There's only so many days for, for development, teacher development. So yes, we have to be patient. I am so impatient. I want it tomorrow, and I feel like the people on the committee all want it tomorrow, and, you know. So I feel like there's good news out there. It's not, it's not everything that we've seen in the past. Things are changing, hopefully quicker than, you know... And I have to give a shout out, thank you for starting this off about school times because I've always thought that was really important. My nephew in Florida, his high school started at 9:30. And somehow it worked, and they made it work. And I hate to say this, but busing's been such an awful thing lately. I mean, it's gotten better this year. Maybe we get rid of busing, something does work. So... Don't write that in the idiom or anything. Don't write that, turn that on.
I do want to say that there's an element of communication here because what we're talking about are kids going into, to middle school from Washington School. And so, you know, maybe there's an element of communication that maybe could be better handled in that transition. And we have a communications committee that we started this year And we have a communications committee that we started this year to look at some of these things because, you know, maybe that should be communicated better to us or our, these initiatives as your kids are coming into the middle school. So I just wanted to kind of mention that as well. Good. Just, uh, please, your name here.
Sorry, Carolyn Rendell, Sveria Taylor. Just on this subject before we move on, one thing we haven't addressed is whether we need the extra twenty, that twenty minute period. If we have to have it and having these things are great, and I know Mr. Connolly is working really hard, I spoke to him about it, but he feels there are constraints as well. You know, as you know, we built this gym, this small gym, but cafeteria is the same size as it, as it was when you and I went to middle school here. And the class size was a hundred and eighty kids in the class, not four hundred. And everything has been expanded. And I know one day maker spaces are probably going to make the need for sustenance unnecessary, but right now eating is still a pretty basic thing. So, you know, one thing he feels that he can't, he wasn't here when this decision was made and he's doing the best he can, but to the extent we can even find space, you know, for more kids to eat and maybe that would help the busing because we have twenty minutes more. So just something not to throw away while we're thinking about all the different things we can work on with the schedules.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Martha Perini, Pittsburgh. I have an eighth grader and, I'm sorry, a seventh grader in the school system. I just want to take a minute to thank all of you for being here and giving up your Sunday. As a full-time working mom, I really appreciate that and having the opportunity to come. As a follow-up to the lunch issue, I, the other aspect of it, it's just not eating. It's a social issue as well. My daughter is a seventh grader, loves hanging out with her friends, they catch up. Oftentimes she comes home, she hasn't eaten her food because she's talking. So just taking into consideration that there's also a social involvement going on, they're really learning how to socialize and be with each other at this age as well. The other topic is class size. You know, I'm not an educator, so I don't know a lot about this, you probably do, but anecdotally, I'm looking and seeing larger class sizes and seeing how rigorous the curriculum is and we're attracting more people because of the reputation of our school. And I worry a little bit about individualized attention from the teachers given the rigorous class curriculums, so want to see if you can talk to that.
So we do have class size guidelines at our elementary, middle and high schools. And so these have been put in actually prior to my being superintendent. And so we have, at the kindergarten level is twenty, first and seventh grade is twenty-three, thank you, and then up to twenty-six, four and five. Middle and high school acknowledging that there are potentially levels, not so much sixth grade, but seventh grade and up, there are levels. And so there are anywhere from, you know, twenty-six to, you know, there are classes that could get to thirty, usually they would be our advanced level, eighth grade level, accelerated classes. But we do work over the summer, part of the role of our administration, of our principals at the middle school and high school is to ensure that we can make changes to schedules. This is when you do a mass, you know, the mass schedule, but then you're looking at individual classes, so that all the individual classes are looked at so as if you can make changes to, we can get the numbers down. And so we say that we really don't, unless we absolutely need to, there's no other way, we want to be able to ensure that we can keep class sizes at the middle school, high school, you know, somewhere the twenty-five, twenty-six at max and not, and the outlier being, you know, twenty-nines and thirties. Having said that, it also, it varies from, you know, certainly classes and classes in terms of what their sizes are. And so while they may have, let's say, English class that might be a little smaller, math class might be a little bit larger, we do make every effort to be able to make sure that we don't have, and I know that's, Mr. Rundus, one of his roles here at the middle school is, we have classes at twenty-eight, we have to move the kids around, acknowledging that, you know, the placement also comes, you want to, as you mentioned, the social aspect, you want to be able to make sure the kids are with each other and, you know, they have friends on the team, so that, that element of middle school, early adolescence is also addressed. But that is something that we do as part of what, sort of the August timeframe, like July, August timeframe, is to make sure that we have classes that are balanced across teams, gender, and so that we have, so all of those elements are taken into consideration primarily, the other values also with regard to numbers, so that we have balanced teams across, but also balanced classes, you know, across and up and down in sixth or eighth grade. And we have many adjustments too, as the classes will get, as larger classes will get, as you've seen, we've had four teams, three teams, based on just the numbers and acknowledging you don't want to start the year off with classes too high because over time the numbers increases as kids will get.
Have you gotten any feedback from teachers in terms of, you know, to give the minimalist attention to the students or how they feel about it? Because the other sort of ancillary topic is that there's no parent-teacher conference in the middle school, I realize, given the size, but there's very low feedback in parents unless there's obviously some issue occurring in your child. But if there is no issue, it really is, it's almost like to me a black box and I can't, this is my first time in middle school, so I don't know. So just wanted to raise that, is there any way to increase communication without creating more work with the teacher, you know, for the teachers, I realize they're running a barrier with this past, you know, curriculum and having to deal with a lot, so.
So I'll share with you that as a middle school teacher, that the middle school becomes where kids want to gain that level of independence, like, do this on my own, mom, I'm good, I've got this, I, you say in middle school, you know that. And so we acknowledge that as well, that's all the one reason we need to ensure that we are getting communications to parents where kids are not, you know, they're falling behind. Are you excited, you may, if you're positive, they're doing well and want them to do particularly well. I think because we have had the opportunity to use in our elementary, in our middle schools now Chromebooks and getting kids feedback on their work has been, you know, through technology, getting, asking questions and being able to get feedback from teachers on your work. The other part of it is the second framework that speaks to, the most important part of the realm of education is not so much the, you know, we look at assessment, it's, it's not grading, it's just between assessment and grading, grading and reporting. And so to give and expand the teacher's repertoire of understanding what's formative versus summative assessment, along the way you're giving kids, to your point, feedback. And so know that there's been much more of a common emphasis on common language for teachers, so that they are giving kids information and feedback on how well they are meeting the standards. But I would also say that if you're not, I mean, our teachers are very responsive to questions that parents have, just, you know, I know I don't need to, you know, you as a mom, you don't need to wait till when there's a problem, you know, just send a quick email, just want to check in on, you know, conversations with your son-in-law in terms of how he or she is doing. Teachers are always amenable. I hear all the time the teachers, I had a former board member just shared with me an email that a teacher just gave an information, just a quick email to a student regarding the midterms over at the high school. Teachers will, they'll respond, reach out.
Okay, great. I think the top is if there is a problem, just getting some, how is my child learning, individualized sort of feedback on them, whereas it's not necessarily centered around problems. And I do agree with you, at this age, you know, they really are building their independence, so you don't want too much of that, of permitting on them to be for their teachers on the road. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna, thank you. We've got a line building up, if you're limited, just do one question for now, and then if you want to ask again, just, thank you.
Hi, I'm Fiona, I'm Fiona Phillips, Ree Circle. I echo, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to ask questions. I apologize in advance because I'm going to offend some people, and I equally was offended when my son was called a nigger and a faggot at the middle school. It was addressed in the school, the boy was suspended for a day and we moved on. Two weeks ago, he was called a nigger again. I am really concerned because we have the swastika issue, we have the KKK issue, and my son is one of, how many hundreds of kids who within a month has been called police slurs. So what I propose, well, what I ask for the board to answer is a couple of things. One, how do these issues actually get addressed? So I wrote, raised it to the principal, I got a call back, I think they dealt with it, I understand Dr. Burton is informed of how, how do these things get reported? And secondly, is anyone looking at these things in aggregate? I've spoken to a couple of parents and other parents have said, yes, that's happened to them, but they haven't raised it. So I really want to understand what the process is. My son's, like, middle school experience is now forever tarnished. He actually, he actually didn't even understand what the gays learn then, and, and, you know, now I've had to expose him to that. I also sort of, I'm very concerned about the child who said it because I don't know if their parent really understood the implications of that child saying those words. He got suspended for a day. You know, that's questionable whether a day was enough. But I think that there needs to be a larger education in the school where kids treat, understand the implications of what they're doing and also who is impacted. So going back to my initial questions, one, when I reported it, what happens to my report beyond, you know, the small comment back? And then is anyone looking at these things in aggregate? Because I'm concerned that there's a systemic issue that needs to be addressed.
Thank you again, you've been in conversations. So these are the types of things, and again, that we are absolutely dealing with, whether they be these types of slurs, the symbols of hate. And so, and again, as I've said, in any, they immediately, any of these types of issues that are raised, I'm notified of. And the appropriate code of conduct are issued. But I think on the, on the larger scale, this is speaking to the work that we are doing in the district to address hate in general, you know, that there is no place, no place for hate in our schools. So I mean, you've kind of shared the, on an individual level, what we're doing with kids, but on the aggregate, we have these types of reports that are part of, as a district, we have to have these and we share them, they're actually required of us at the state and county level, they are, the reports of this are shared. So what are we doing? We have, actually, we embarked on this work last year, working with global awareness and cultural diversity, really looking at, at levels of intolerance, you know, that we see that emerge in these types of situations. And again, these are, these are times where you're, you're sitting with kids and you're, to your point, helping them to understand the impact of, and so there are follow-up conversations with, you know, our guidance folks, you know, so it's not just this one and done, you're punished or what we deem to have been, you know, a punishment. But what are we doing to help that, that student to understand what he said, the impact of what he or she said on their fellow students? But then also, how are we as a community? I mean, it's, it's larger than a one-time issue or a couple of time issues with one or two kids. And so that you know, it's part of, again, what we are doing with professional development, so that when these things happen, we have teachers who have been trained on how to respond. So it's not just something that they don't know how to respond or that should they respond, you know that this is inappropriate, this is hate. But then also, how do we take that next step? And I can assure you that when we had issues with the swastikas in our school, there was time taken to be able to talk with kids about what this is, what do these symbols mean and what they mean in some cultures that are more, much more benevolent, but today these are symbols, symbolic representations of hate. And so then you know also beyond that, I've also reached out with, the clergy have reached out with me, and we have a forum now that I'm part of that is multi-denominational with multiple religions, ethnicities, you know, that are coming together and say, what are we, not simply the school, because this is a school, we partner with home in this issue. We educate kids, but we often find that hate lands in our doorstep. And so we have a responsibility to educate our kids on what hate, why this is hate, but also what's the impact of their, their actions, because if we don't help to have them learn, they're going to grow up as adults and think that this is okay. But in some way, shape or form, it's coming to our doorstep. And so we need to partner with the greater community that says, those types of words, those types of symbols, we need to educate our families in terms of what role that plays, that when you, if it's in your home, it's being brought to school and the impact that it has on our, us as, as the educators in our school. So it's a broad, I say this to you, it's a, it's a broad, it's a whole community effort. And I can assure you that, I mean, with regard to, you know, that for those in the audience with regard to this, I mean, this is the first time that I've had that, the swastika since I've been here in the district now, here nine years. But the elements also that you're sharing with have, but this is now much more of a, we need to educate our kids and say this is unacceptable, you know, this level of intolerance is not acceptable in our schools. And what are we, continue to, very much like the mantra that we have in everything, one of the messages that we say to our kids, unacceptable, hate has no place in our schools. And so, so that you know, we've, I've been working with this group and they're wanting to, what can we do as a community that sends these, these messages about, we're Milburn, we all adhere together. And that's the message, the clear message that we need to be sending.
So I appreciate that. What trans, so I'm not clear on timelines or what exactly, it sounds, it all sounds great, and I'm sure you guys are doing good work, but my question is, is what's the action plan? So I've got a second grader now coming up, am I going to wait, do I have to wait until she gets into, to middle school for her to experience? I just, I'm not clear on, I know what's being done, can we be more transparent about the work? Can we be more transparent about the training? Can we be more transparent about the school, the kid education?
Yeah, so actually, tomorrow's Friday's State Meeting, I'm going to present an update on our global awareness and cultural diversity work. So we partnered with Dr. Kyati Joshi, is part of the Institute for Education for Social Justice. So she's been engaging in professional learning with about forty of our teachers across the district, perform these equity teams. And the result of those equity teams is that they're going to help scale that learning in their buildings. We've also had two days of that same training with the teachers, I'm sorry, with that. And so what's come from that so far is an action plan to really dig into our curriculum and structural practices to ensure both equity, but also make sure that the learning is systematic over time, right? Because assemblies are great, having a Holocaust speaker in is powerful, but that's not enough, right? So some work we've done so far is to reassemble K eight social studies curriculum committees. There's a New Jersey state mandate that indicates across grades, K twelve and every grade level, there has to be a learning related to the Amistad and the Holocaust. And so while we've had that in our curriculum, it hasn't been explicit enough. So we've gone back at K four and created main units around those topics and made the learning in grades five to eight more explicit. Also, in grades six to eight, I saw a question, this ties to galvanizing some of the reading choices in the middle school also, that give you some work. So we've just spent a lot of financial resources for texts that relate to social justice. So in grades six to eight, each ELA teacher is going to be piloting a book club, if you will, where students can choose books that they wish to read as part of their in-class learning around issues of social justice. So those are just two things we've done so far. We've had Destiny, which is a company from the FALC that helps man our libraries and amount, do an audit of our resources and the texts that students have access to, to ensure different subgroups, different minorities, different ethnicities are represented in those collections. I'll be speaking more about this tomorrow, but that's some of the action plan, I think that you're in want of hearing.
So I know there's a long line, so I won't take up too much time, but a couple of extra points that I'd like to make is, so that sounds good, but there's a variety of cultures. I mean, if you, if you look in this room, there's a variety of cultures that needs, that kids need to be educated about, and there's a very deep history. And I think it shouldn't be just about, oh, well, somebody used KKK, let's educate about, you know, the Holocaust plan. There's some deep history there. So I think that they're, you know, I, I hope that that's part of the sort of curriculum that you're, that you're planning to, to roll out. And then, I'm not sure if I truly got an answer around, is anyone looking at these reports in aggregate? My son's issue wasn't classified as a hit, so I don't know if it, you know, cascaded up to that level, but is anyone looking at, okay, over the last year, this is how many times, you know, the N word's been used, this is what's been happening, so we can kind of see if there's a trend here or not. There may not be, my, my son may be an isolated incident, I don't think so, but, you know, I'd like to know if that's in.
Just to be clear, you said that was not classified as a hit?
It was not classified as a hit.
Okay. Because this is friend. I'd like to talk more to.
So, so in addition to what Mr. Burton just expressed, I would also like to add that we also need to be able to educate our children on the different family dynamics, on the different family dynamics that we have. No child should call another child a faggot. So if we educate our children, know that many children are not from a mom and dad household, you know, many children come from different, you know, living with their trauma, maybe they were living with, you know, their, their two, two moms, or they, they need to have this understanding. I have zero tolerance for things like this, and I can express to you, to you all, that we are looking into how to address this issue. And I believe that, you know, charity begins at home. Children are not born with hate, they learn hate. So if the parents are having this kind of discussion at home, they need So if the parents are having this kind of discussion at home, they need to understand the bigger impact that this is having on other children, and the impact that it's having on, you know, us as a community. Even as close as Maplewood is to us, they have this issue too. And we have a lot of different, people move from Milburn to Maplewood because they want diversity. I don't think so much as they are getting the diversity that they are looking for. I've been here in Milburn, for example, I've been here 11 years, and I can tell you guys that it's very upsetting whenever I hear this kind of situation. My, so also to let you know, Mrs. Vellis, this is not just happening in the middle school. So my fourth grader, when she was in kindergarten, at the playground was saying that she's going to grow up to be a devil because she is black, and that the reason why we don't have blacks in our schools as teachers, because they're dumb. And I said to my daughter, your dad is a doctor, and I'm a scientist. Blacks are not dumb, it's stereotype. So these are the things that we need to have as part of our curriculum, to teach children, you know, that you just need to be tolerant of one another. And parents also need to understand we are adults, we need to be able to put our big cans on and have this type of discussion at home with our children. And know that you're not just going to be suspended for one day, it's going to be a bigger punishment. This is a public school, and we need to, we need to conduct ourselves as such. Thank you.
So I just want to add one other thing, as far as board business or what administration, you know, one of the things that was touched upon is, I believe, starting in the last couple of years, we talked about personnel, about making sure we are publicizing our job offerings in more diverse periodicals, or if those are still used, but we, that has been something that was raised at the board level and that has been put into place. I don't know if I can talk to that specifically, or that we need to, because I'm, I want to be aware of the time, or aware of the time, but that is something that we have discussed internally.
I just, I just think it would be nice to understand what those efforts are. I'm sure you guys are doing stuff, I just, and maybe the community has some additional work.
Hi guys, Andrew Tokar, Six Claremonts. Hackerspace, Makerspace, love it, love seeing these things popping up at all the schools, I think it's fantastic. I was wondering if there are any plans to open these things up to the public? For example, I think it'd be great if I could come with my kids, I have a freshman in a junior high school, would love to know more about these things myself, and think that maybe there could be a sustaining model as well, because obviously, the equipment costs money, the materials cost money, and I think it could be something, fundraisers, things like this, I just think it would be, again, pretty cool to do something like that. Wondering if there's a current initiative going, anything we can get involved in?
So I will share with you that prior to having the mill over at the high school, they, the robotics and the computer science kids and Mr. Farrell over at the high school, and actually, because he oversees them, but a lot of the kids did, took it solely upon themselves to have hackathons. And so now, already, in the process are, we can do this on multiple times a year, based upon the fact that we now have an enormous space and places for people to meet. So we anticipate, wish I had the dates and time for you, but it's already in the planning to have a hackathon and, again, put it into the hands of Milburn, and I often say, put the ideas into the hands of Milburn kids and just watch it soar. Because they did it all by themselves, with just simply being able to do material, now they designated space, I anticipate it's going to be bigger and better than ever. So before that's seen.
Hi again, Carolyn Rendell, 308 Taylor Road South. Just wanted to get a few things out there, I don't need to give a long list, but before the meeting is over, some concerns, I have a child fifth grade in the middle school and two in elementary school, next year I'll have one in high school, middle school, elementary school, and fifth grade the year after. So going down to the Washington School, one thing that we potentially lost, we lost for the younger kids when we made the switch with the Washington School, is the issue with the specialist teachers, because they're being shared by more schools, there are more instances where a teacher is sick and there isn't a substitute, or a teacher has to run to do a band concert at one school and there isn't one for the other school. So what I hear, I've heard from my kids, and I think it's getting better, is we didn't have art, we didn't have libraries, there wasn't a teacher there, my middle school kids, and again, I think it's getting better, you know, there was no Jip teacher, so we sat around for 40 minutes, and that happens once a week, you know, so just, and I know you're aware of it, but it's something to keep on the board, that those programs are so important, and having the staffing, and, you know, we lost the holiday concert, and I know we have a winter concert, but for us, at least in Glenway, this is still a huge loss for us, it was such a great time for the community to come together, it's not quite the same, and I know everything can't always be the same, but be aware that parents still talk about it, there's texts every winter, God, I miss that concert, and the community feeling, the art show was a nice time for all the parents to be together and to walk through the school with their kids. And yes, there's art up during parent-teacher conferences, it's not the same. So as someone from an arts background, just keep in mind, those are losses, and I know everyone's aware and doing their best, but just to keep that on the burner as well. The other thing is just, we talked about fields, I just wanted to add the Washington School field, you're aware, my kids play soccer, have recess there. And I don't even know if this is a board issue or more Washington School PTO and parent fundraising issue, but there still isn't some playground equipment they need there. My kid needs to move around, I know some fifth graders are done with the playground, but mine isn't. And he goes out there, and they are sort of rationed on the climbing thing, because there's so many kids, they can only spend two minutes each on the climbing thing. And they can't play a full game of, Gaga, Gaga, which is their favorite, because there isn't enough, there's so many kids, and there's two Gaga pits, so they have to go in and out, they can't play a full game. So he's decided he's just going to go to the library and read during recess, which is good in some ways, but he needs the exercise, he's gaining weight, he's not getting, so just another thing, and again, to the extent you have control or can, you have to let that fall, by the way, so there have been huge improvements between this year and last year in the Washington School, I know we're working on it, something to keep in mind. And then, very briefly, going back up to the high school and the middle school, you know, I know you hear a lot about test scores, grades, but I think you can tell today, there are a lot of us who are much more concerned with health and wellness, learning for learning state, state, kids getting inspired. For me, you know, this is the AP qualifiers is a big thing. It's good that some step was taken, that maybe if a kid gets an A, they don't have to take a qualifier, but I think we're the only district in the country, or one of the only ones, that require an admissions test, that you sort of know the course before you take the course. And that, that's just, there's just no need for it. I know it makes it easier for the administration, because they don't have to deal with parents as much, but I think let the kids have the opportunity, again, I don't think it should, you know, I know there has to be some criteria, and you don't want to water down the class to the point where it's not worth it for the kids who can't take it, but certainly, give the kids the opportunity. I would rather my kid get challenged and learn new ways of thinking and get a C, than be safe and get an A, because to me, I want him challenged, I want him to learn, so you get exposed to something, and you know it, you fail, but from my perspective, then that's the choice, you know, that we need as parents. I'm going to let someone else speak, who's going to also address these issues, but all of these things about stress, pressure, and having to have hundreds of dollars to pay high school tutors, tutor your kids in the high school, it's making parents and leaving the school. And I, for one, can't afford to, so I'm invested. So I really want the school to really serve all students and to be a healthy place for them to be, where they come out loving learning, and loving what they learn, and not feeling miserable and stressed. I know you were very interested.
Hi, I guess, I guess at rude, I talk to a lot of people who wish that they could be here today, they couldn't, so I guess that tangentially, I'm going to slip in here that I wish that you had, like, four open forums a year, you know, so that at different times, so that different people could come, you know, like, whatever, I'll be there, it's like that. But the idea, in other words, of more information and more accessibility being great, and like other people have said before, we really appreciate all of you making yourselves available and accessible for this Q and A. And so, I guess Carolyn spoke to a part of so many concerns, so many children in the school, and a big trend that I'm seeing is people, people are very afraid, and it's parents here are very afraid, the children are extremely afraid and are extremely stressed out, and it goes way beyond the 20-minute issue at the middle school, although that does sow some of the seeds. You have the issue, you have so many different issues that the number of guidance counselors at the high schools remain steady over the years, despite the bubble of population, it goes up and down, I understand that, but nothing has happened. And so the question is, then, then the people who can afford it hire private college consultants because their child's counselor may not have enough time for them, or may not be able to address specific niche concerns and needs. So, you know, and so, what can we do about that? What can we do about the fact that, you know, you have a, you mentioned a guideline in the high school for 28 for a class size, that is really good. 28 is very, very high. And so, if my kid is in there, or your kid is in there, and they don't understand what's happening in class, then yeah, you're going to hire the $100 an hour or the $200 an hour private tutor, because you can't deal with the tears at 11:30 at night, when your kid has to be on the bus at 7:00 AM, and probably you have to be on the train for work, maybe at 6:00. So this is all leading to so many people, and I'm telling you, like, my youngest child is three and a half, and there are people who, they come up to me, they're like, oh, your kid, Milburn High, you're sending your children to Milburn High School? I'm like, yeah, yeah, that's, that's actually why we moved here, because I grew up here and we want the public schools, that's, that's why we're here. I would never, I would never send my children to Milburn High School, because my kid is not like, my kid is not a star athlete, my kid is not a star, you know, in the firmament, and my kid is going to be lost. And I can't run that risk, and I would rather live here with these crazy taxes, and yet somehow get the money together to send my kid to private school, because they'll be better off. I, obviously, you know, my money where my mouth is, I don't believe that that's true, my kids are still in this school system. But when I, so this is like a, this is like a tremendous, like, kind of like garbage tale of a question, and it's not, so I guess what I'm saying is, much more communication from you and from this back and forth needs to happen, because you have, and I hope your survey that you're sending out in February, I really hope that's anonymous, because there are a lot of people who are going to be afraid to fill it out if it's not anonymous, and if their child's name is attached to it, because everyone is afraid, people are afraid to come up here and speak, because they're afraid that somehow it will have some implication on what team their kid is put on, or what teacher their kid has. I'm just telling you, that's what people think. So whether, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm at the point where I give zero, so I'm really fine, I'm absolutely fine with this, but like, but people need more transparency for the process, and so the idea of having more forums, having more openness, and having more concrete measures to actively address not only student stress, we have a student health and wellness, but you have a parent community that's really pretty stressed out too. And it's not just that the parents are crazy, some of us are, some of us aren't.
How far are yours? And we'll go back before. Does it work? So you're not crazy at all, and you and I have had a lot of conversations about this. I took over the microphone, because one of the things that I, that I brought to the table, and one of my purposes for being on the board, was to bring that kind of clarity, because I'm, you know, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm not for the board at all. But to bring that kind of clarity to the process. So one of the things that we're doing is we're creating a communications committee, an ad hoc committee on the board, to look at these things, but look at them holistically. We identified four different areas of communications that we want to address, we've given the names, you know, the first is sort of foundational, what are our core identity, you know, who are we, what's our mission goal, what's our educational path, you know, why are we doing what we're doing? We're going to look at things like, you know, directional, what's the, what is the best path for each of our children? If you have a kid that is in the middle of a path learner, what alternatives exist for that child versus the traditional academics? We're going to try to create more clarity around the planning for that, so that parents have the tools that they need to look at their children and figure out where they need to go. We're going to continue doing what we're doing with logistical information, our calendars, our forms, our language emergency information, and then we're going to look at stuff that's reputational, you know, why Milburn. I can tell you, and I'm going to speak for myself, I've been here for 10 years, I am now on the Board of Ed, but I spent every year since I got here moving in my head, because I was so worried about the things that you're talking about. I've got kids that are alternative, you know, they're artsy and they're quirky, and I wasn't sure they were going to do well. And what I have found is, that if you, if you get over that fear, and you step into, you lean into that fear, and you do use your voice, you can actually accomplish quite a bit on behalf of your kids, and you can kind of dispel what is myth and what is, what is true. And I can also tell you that part of the process of my running for the board was to really do a deep dive into the district, and really try to look at data and understand what was and what wasn't. And I grew incredibly impressed about some of the direction that we're taking with preparing our children for the world that is coming. Because I also think that there is a thing that we're not, we're not saying here, which is that the world is in deep transition, and we all carry a lot of anxiety around what the next, you know, steps are going to be for our kids. So to the extent that education can kind of match that, I think it'll help lower the temperature a little bit, and to the extent that we can actually lift the cloud for parents about, you know, why we're doing the things that we're doing, we're hoping that will help alleviate some of the stress as well. And I don't know if that, I feel like I just talked a lot, so I don't know if that answered your question as directly as I wish that I would have, but it's, it's a start anyway.
I do want to add that to some of those points that, when I have young kids, I want to know about your school, I want to know about your school, and if I talk to the middle school one, high school comes up, I get anxiety. And it's like, okay, I'm on the Board of Ed, but you're going to have anxiety about it. This is really, you know, the purpose of why I created this committee. One of the reasons why is so that I think parents who have kids in elementary school or in Washington School should have some understanding of what this is all about, can you get to the middle school or the high school. It's important, I'm sure it's important to other, other parents who are, who hear things in the great mind, some of them are not true, some are true, some are not true, but really want to have some clarity as to what happens when your child goes, moves that transition from elementary school, which is really still market school, into the middle school and the high school. So this is a big part of our movement. Caroline is hanging up that effort. I don't know if we can be able to accomplish everything that I usually could accomplish in the next year, but I know that we're, what we're definitely starting this year on.
And to add to what Mr. Ogden just mentioned was, that I've had opportunities to have superintendent forums, conversations, and I recently put together with my communications person a district advisory team, and will continue with those, to have an opportunity, these are across grade levels, across grade spans, and to sit with about a group of parents and say, there are some topics about that we want to hear and have a conversation with you about. And one of the things that I did in a prior conversation with a group of parents was, answer the question, if I had known then what I know now, you'd obviously do things differently. And in that spirit, what would you give as your best piece of advice, now that you're at the middle school, to your elementary parent colleagues? Or if you're at the high school, what would you give to the middle school? And as well as those who have kids who have gone off and they ran through the gauntlet of the, you know, the college application process? You go onto our district website, under Health and Wellness, the answers, and they are candid answers, right from, we cut and pasted them right from, we put out a survey, and we asked the parents, based upon the grade level that you've just gone through, what's your best piece of advice? It's there, you can go in there, and it says the parents' survey information. What we've just done, I've asked the parents that have been part of the district advisory team, to go back and answer that yet again, and we're going to add to that. We're going to really help parents to be able to, this is your college, have gone through and say, this is what I think. And a lot of times, I hear moms and dads saying, you know, I've talked to my neighbors who have a kid who went through, and they tell me this, we want to share that with everyone, because, and you'd be interested, I mean, I read through, again, the things that they share, and these are things that, when you're in it, you learn about it, and they're giving you the best piece of advice. So I would ask you, go onto Health and Wellness, what I would also mention is, we have taken a lot of the illness that we've, that we heard that were important in regard to health and wellness, and it's up on our website, on the advertisements and things that we are doing, both at the building's level, but also at the district level, to help to address. We know we have a very rigorous district, but at the end of the day, as I said, there's still kids, there's still kids. We don't want to, as I mentioned, you know, take their childhood from them, how do we help them to get through, but also enjoy their educational experience? do we help them to get through, but also enjoy their educational experience? And so we have to say, are we making sure we don't forget about those kids?
And my last thing? I think if it's not obvious to you guys, then, then I, I will say that I think I can speak for my colleagues in that we're all really, really committed to doing what's best, thank you, for doing what's best for kids, and the topics of health and wellness, and the topics of community, and looking out for one another, those are things that we all talk about on a regular basis and that are important to us. So we all haven't been here for 20 years, so, you know, I, I would say, give the team a chance to, to do our part.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you for that. I just also just wanted to echo, I wanted to thank the effort that you put in in terms of gathering voices across the community, because obviously not everyone comes out to these really fun forums. And it's important to get a diverse perspective, or for us at least, to help us guide our year in terms of what are people, what are our community members thinking about? You know, this drive, that's why we do it in the beginning of the year, because it helps inform our committee work, because, you know, if it, if it mattered enough to put it in the email or come out for a few hours on a Sunday, then, then that's where, you know, the concerns are lying. Thing I want to just mention, because, you know, social media is such a fun, fun part of our lives, but I want to just caution that, you know, that we, you know, model the behavior that we want to see in our kids, which means like avoiding making sweeping, you know, statements about the state of the communications in the district, or the, the, you know, the high school that cares about kids at a certain level. I mean, clearly, that's not, you know, based on my work, my dignity, and my kids are not in high school yet, that's not true, it's just not true. We have a district made up of people who are so dedicated and working so hard for all of us to make this district as great as it is. And the concept of like this private school thing, or like, you know, I mean, I am a person who, you know, speaking for myself, I have three children, and my eldest goes to private school, and that was not an easy decision for me, it's what she needed for her, for her success. And so I just caution the whole, you know, it's not so black and white all the time, the decision to, to make that choice, because I did move here for the school district. And I just want to make sure that people are not sensationalizing that move. There was a question that came up about the numbers of students that are leaving the district who go into private school, and there's this thing that happens every single year that when you're the parent, in the, when you're in that grade, when you're in fifth grade, and you see that there are some kids that are going to private school, and you're in eighth grade, and some kids are going off to private school, it feels like this is the biggest amount of, you know, the largest amount of kids that are doing this. And we've looked at numbers, and they're not incredibly conclusive in terms of, you know, the reporting, in terms of us being able to measure exactly how many kids are leaving our district to go to, to private school, but the numbers do show, and I can say that as we've looked at this in the past, that there is no overwhelming exodus that, that has occurred. So we can show the data, and if any of that is concerned to anyone, we can, we can talk about that. I just wanted to kind of put that out there because we, you know, the generalizations are what help ignite or, you know, incite the panic, right? And if we all just kind of, you know, calm down and spoke about our own personal experience, what experiences, it would go a long way. Well, another quick thing that I'd like to add is that as a, as a leadership team, we, we talked with Dr. Burton and Ms. Schneider about making sure that every board meeting, we celebrate something about our district, whether it's, you know, an amazing teacher in their class, excuse me, that was my mind, and whether it's, you know, at the high school, the middle school, et cetera, but like, making sure that that's a part of our regular routine at public meetings, because it's not just about the squeaky wheel and, you know, whatever, but it's, let's make sure that we're putting that out there as well. That's our responsibility to celebrate everything that's going on.
Sorry, just to follow up just concretely, can you just address whether there are going to be any more guidance counselors hired at the high school, and also what the mechanism is for checking any teachers who may not be the excellent ones that you're exploring?
So there are some questions that can I answer, leave it first now, so we'll have to answer them, because we're going out to.
I think with regard to, and I know, I know we're hearing about, you know, the need for guidance counselors, I'll, I'll mention that we did add a guidance counselor at Washington School this year. The, the position is funded through, through a grant that will continue, so it's not one that won't continue, but it is part of, so know that it is part of, you know, all the budgeting questions, we're in on the process of developing a budget. And as I mentioned, there have been, when we meet with all the budget managers, we have needs for, you know, additional teachers, additional support, additional technology professionals, additional people to help with maintaining our schools, the custodial staff, so the needs are across. Part of what our challenge is, is based upon the current budget with a 2% salary cap limit. How do we prioritize and how do we speak to what goes into that budget? That is on the, the docket, if you will, whether it will make the final cut in the entire budget, it's, we're not in discussion, it's not all that, in terms of whether or not we'll add.
Sorry. I don't think you meant the salary cap, you meant the tax revenue, the property tax. So I don't know how many people actually know what you're talking about from a community perspective, but just to lay that out there, there actually is a state law that mandates that we cannot increase revenues from tax levying perspective more than 2% each year, without going out for a vote. So just to be clear, that's the, that's the cap that she meant, not, it's not salary related, it's related to the tax per single.
I'm sorry, we're going to go to the next person. I'm sorry.
Cristal, from the Chalmers Street. I just wanted to, of course, I'm going to go back to her, excuse me. The point you were making as far as like publicizing the records of how many instances there have been, I think is really important. The same thing happened to my son, and it's happened to some others' sons, and it happened with me right after, actually during Christmas break, my son told me, and he told me, he told me it was happening regularly, and that it was happening even after the swastika pink thing thing. And so to me, knowing that there were children spoken to, but it still didn't change much, it brought me back to that. I want to celebrate the fact that Mr. Connolly has been fantastic, he's been fantastic. I, I won't speak poorly of anyone else, but I, being that I have had another experience that dealt with racial issues a couple of years ago, we had learned from our mistakes and how it was dealt with it, and he has, he's very swift, and he means what he says, when he says he does not tolerate intelligence. So I want to, I want to acknowledge that. With that said, my question is, because I, you had mentioned, you pointed about parents talking about race, and we need to put on our big girl and big boy pants, but the truth is, parents are not having that conversation. I don't think it's on the list of priorities, because even when you mentioned that happened, there were still gasps, and that tells me that, one, you don't think it's happening, or you don't think your child can say it. And with your instance, it was a friend, with my instance, it was not a friend. So sometimes it's ignorance chosen, and sometimes it's ignorance not chosen. And so in my mind, what can we do, because we are doing fantastic work with the diversity and the cultural training with the teachers and admin, and that's going to take time, because once you're dealing with the heart and you're dealing with the soul, you can't change a heart overnight. And so I'm, I'm, I'm accepting that all of those things that we've been working on, which has been fantastic, it's going to take time, but my children are not going to benefit from that today, and they probably won't benefit from it next year, and they probably won't benefit from it without out of high school, because it's a, it's a process. I am totally proud of the fact that there are children that will be coming in that will benefit, and that's really why we continue to work, in my mind, in my heart. But what do we do now? What do we do now to give both my child and the child who has the issue saying those words? How do we empower them? How do we enlighten them? How do we do it now? What do we do today? Because while my kid may not experience all of the things that we've been working on, that's going to take time, what are the things? Because the other thing that happened was, the kids don't know they'll be suspended, and the parents don't know that they'll be suspended. So there's an ignorance, even with the parents, and knowing that there's a punishment that happens. So how do we, how do you tell, I mean, if we, we tell our kids, if your, your child steals, they're going to get suspended, they're going to get whatever, whatever, we say that, we put it out there for everyone to know. So why can't that be done, something that says, you know, right is right, wrong is wrong, and then the punishments won't be like we're handing out parking tickets, you know what I mean? And so, again, I, I say that with the love, because I really do love this place, and I do love that my children go here, and I do think that they have a shot at having an equal experience, but when things like that happen, it tarnishes their innocence, and it really does, it brings friendships. In several instances, we've lost friends because of it, both children and adults. And so there's, there's a deeper element as far as, yes, we want, right is right and wrong is wrong, we know that, but you can lose a friend, you know? You can lose an adult friend, you can lose a child friend, and both children will have lost the opportunity to learn from it and to be better from it. And so, so I say that because I need, I need to know, I need to be assured that my children today don't feel socially or emotionally unsafe, because they'll be one of the few. I need to be assured that my child has the same exact experience academically as yours, or yours, or yours, or yours. I need to be assured of that, otherwise this whole thing would be in vain.
Thank you for having this event every year. It would be great if there were more of them. Thank you for having it here at the middle school in this beautiful space. The irony is, if that you had tried to have it at the library, nobody could find a parking space, because that place has been full of high school students and middle school students and their tutors for the last two weeks, so we probably couldn't park there or, you know, get in there to begin with. So it's probably a good idea we have it here. I just, I just want to address Emily's comment about sweeping general, Ms. Jaffe's sweeping generalizations, just to bring some things down to specifics, because I truly believe that all of you up there are doing your level best to make the scholastic and academic experience, and the health and wellness experience, and the holistic experience for all of our kids as good as it can possibly be. But at the same time, a lot of us have very specific examples of instances where our schools failed our children, at the elementary level, at the middle school level, at the high school level, and that's why we bring these issues to you. Sometimes it's, it's difficult, and I know you guys are doing your best, but at the same time, you also have to know that some of our kids were failed by our systems, by our teachers, by our administrators, by our policies, by our rules, and that's why we keep coming to try to make things better, if we can, for the kids coming up. My three boys did sit like deal in cages at the auditorium for all of their years of middle school. I hope that they are doing things to improve it now for the kids who are coming up. My kids are dealing with AP qualifiers now right after midterms, maybe in later years, other kids won't have to deal with that in the same way. I know you guys want to have a chance to hit the ground running, but please at the same time realize that it won't be in time for some kids, for everything, for the block scheduling, for the event scheduling, for the flipping the, the school times around. So if you could please try to hear people within you, bring up issues to you at the different building levels, it's great that you're doing this new challenge success survey, but there was a help them on this survey in 2015. A ton of data was collected, a report was put out on our website, no one is really sure what happened after that. I think the only thing that we really know about is the puppies at the high school, and that we do have this great new Common Lunch, and I'm wrapping up. The Common Lunch is not the answer to all of the high school's issues. So thank you for your service and continuing to come up with good creative solutions quickly that can actually affect the kids who are in the district now, not the kids who are, you know, in some pregnant woman's belly for later on.
So just in, in response to that one specific point, thank you for your comments, the health and wellness, just wanted to get, I wasn't trying to speak about this, I was, wanted to let you know that that effort that was district-wide, that, what, what that then morphed into is that there is a health and wellness committee at every building level that, and I can, I'm not on, the health and wellness committee is at the building level, so maybe someone else could talk to that, but it didn't die necessarily after that, it has just broken off into all each individual school.
One interesting thing about crossing from where you guys are, this side of the aisle, is sort of seeing the, you know, stepping into the shoes. I spent two days with a couple of people here in West Windsor, I think it was, getting trained, and it was so eye-opening to really understand not only what, what the constraints are, but how difficult it is to drive progress through a huge bureaucracy. And when we all got in the car, we were like, wow, we're doing great. We drove home like, wow, we love Milburn, because we were so impressed with the level of innovation that Dr. Burton has actually brought, you know, to the table. When you talk about challenge success, that is a direct, that program coming here is a direct outshoot of the work that, that we've done with health and wellness. When you need to mobilize an enormous bureaucracy with all kinds of layers that are also regulated through crazy amounts of detailed regulation, you need to have a process like that to come, to look at all the different gears, and to be able to drive it in a programmatic way so that we're not just talking about it, but we're actually doing it. So she did that with, with health and wellness. I was really impressed with the work that we're doing with Future Ready. That was something that in my instructions, I went from class to class, and everyone, there was a huge topic about the 21st century, and I can honestly say to you that what we're doing here in Milburn, people drop their jaws, like, you're doing what? You, what? So our challenge is going to be to take what I've now learned and bring it to you, so that you understand as well what we're talking about, not in a, not in a big picture way, but in a tangible way. So we will work on that, but I, I did just want to say, Carrie, wherever you went, that although it feels like change isn't happening, you and I are old timers, and we know what it was like 10 years ago, and I do think a lot of things have changed. And more importantly, and the thing that I hope to walk out of here with, is we're poised, we really are, for the first time that I've been in this district, really poised for significant shifts in the way that we operate, but it won't be overnight, because if you saw the amount of regulation that we live under, you would wonder why we're up here.
I just to add again, with regard to the health and wellness, it wasn't, and I know parents have spoken to, the forum that we had, and all that came out of it, and the work that we had done at that time said, you know what, it needs to be specific to the building levels, to the grade level, that's age appropriate, and that's why the work went to the individual buildings, where there are initiatives like. And I want to invite you to, part of it is having their kindness challenge, and they're opening up their schools. to see what they've been doing. So if you'd like to, after the forum today, to take a ride over to Hartor's own school, I would welcome you to see the amazing work that they have done in their work to do the kindness challenge, and I pointed out in my superintendent's update too. Print that off, to have an opportunity to be able to find ways in which, and that's part of what we are doing, is setting the new tone, the new types of messages. So we did the health and wellness at the building levels, but we continue to do those things at the district level. We were bringing in speakers like Frank Booney, and the showing of angst, and things that we have done with neighboring districts with the superintendent's consortium, where we invite people to come to Summit City Province, Chatham, Berkeley Heights, and us as a group. When we have a speaker, we invite them and vice versa, and so we put those out, so I want you to understand that, again, health and wellness is something that doesn't stop. It just continues, we just find ways in which to continue with our message. And I do want to also assure the mom who asked us about, you want to be assured about your child, that's part of their health and wellness. They want to be, the school is a place that I can go, that I feel people accept me, who I am, and that I can maximize my potential, because if you don't, first and foremost, feel that people accept you, your friends, your teachers, the people who run the schools, that diminishes your ability to learn. So be assured. And our work continues to improve that for children we have today and those to come.
We'll just say that we have eight minutes left, so.
Michael Richter, Shore Hills, right around the corner. I'm the mother, too, probably the happiest sixth grader in the district, despite having sat down at his desk one day and discovered his swastika and gave a kiss to him, but he actually came out of the, the whole process feeling okay. I, I do want to say that when I, when we talked about it at home, I found out from my ninth graders that it's, it's not as isolated, isolated of an incident as it may have, but my kids actually saw those symbols in the bathroom, and one of my sons said, oh, I just took a pen and crossed it out, and it never told me or anyone else about it, but dealt with it in his own way. We should just be aware that these things may be happening, you're just not reaching the level of the parents. Generally speaking, very happy, I thought I wouldn't be up here if I didn't have complaints, I suppose. And with regard to health and wellness, again, as you mentioned, Dr. Burton, we did have the screening of a wonderful movie called Inks a couple of weeks ago, and I thought it was a wonderful movie, I think there was a missed opportunity when we came to the panel discussion afterwards, because many parents had submitted questions in advance of the screening of the movie, none of which were answered. And a lot of those questions were those questions, as Georgiana had mentioned, that parents are intimidated or fearful about bringing up in public and showing their face, so they submitted those questions in advance and really wanted answers to it, and those were questions pertaining to high school, middle school, et cetera, and the anxiety that our children are feeling, and the anxiety that's bubbling up in our homes. And the questions went unanswered, some of the questions that were brought up that were written on flashcards in the moment were addressed by the vice principal and not really even, not allowing the panel members to really voice their opinions on the subject. And it didn't have to be, those, those people on the panel did not have to put down the school in any way in order to answer those questions, they simply were not allowed to answer the questions, I felt that they were stifled, and it really was unconscionable, it was so exciting to me. The board member, longtime board member of the Ed Foundation, and I was so happy that we were having this moment, but it really just stunned me deeply, and I do feel that the Board of Ed and administration really do care about the health and wellness of our children. We need to have more openness and not shutting down questions and conversations. So I just wanted to put that out there for public record and for people to really understand what was happening.
We will look to address those questions as part of the fourth follow-up. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I'm quickly, I promise, took New Maribor, bring on London. I've been very involved in schools over the years, and we made a decision last year that my daughter, the private high school, is perfect for her, but I think that, I was really surprised when you said that you didn't know necessarily how many students had left, it's hard to get that data. It struck me that it might be a missed opportunity that no one reached out and said, why's your daughter leaving? And I know that would be, especially at a personal level, you know, a guidance counselor, anybody, but even in, in general, kind of a survey of people who leave, because we have to fill out a form that says, we're leaving, it doesn't say why, which is fine, but like, maybe that might be a good place to get some data that says, why are you leaving? Where are you going? And I don't know if it's at a, just a form letter that goes out, or a survey, or if it's a personal conversation with a guidance counselor, but it might be a good opportunity for the district to realize what some of the issues are, or why are some people leaving? Because I think talking to some people, there aren't a lot of similarities among the people who leave, so it just might be a good idea for you guys to reach out and see what the issues are, and see if that's something that you can add to your field of data that you have. So, no response, you too.
I can tell, one more time. I just wanted to say that they do have these forums every two weeks, it's called the Board of Ed meeting, and they offer public comments, and a lot of times you don't really speak back, but maybe you can change that as part of your policy. And, but they do, there are plenty of opportunities for, for the board to hear everybody's comments, complaints, compliments. Also, I am on the board trustees of the Education Foundation, been very involved in schools. I welcome you to join me on the Ed Foundation, where you can really make a difference in our schools. We have no money, we have a big budget gap that we're dealing with, and the Ed Foundation is here to provide innovation and progressive programs for our teachers and our, our children, so I feel like I have, you know, I think the people here to tell that Milburn Schools Rock is coming up on March 15th. It's our biggest fundraiser, and it makes a difference in funding the grants that our teachers and faculties apply for. So please consider donating an auction item, or actually coming to the event, which is such an amazing event, so much fun, or volunteering for our schools. I'm a working parent, and I find time to do what I can, there's a place for everyone with the Education Foundation or the PTO as well, whether you can do something at night, send an email, is anything, you know, will take your help, so thank you.
Just a quick question, by the way, I just want to say that we'll answer the questions that we've touched upon more than two, that were sent to us, most of them we, we get to, but we do, but we do want to answer, and answer what we posted to, to the question. Explain the group policy, when, when are they given to, how long, why? It's a general group policy question.
We had a minute left, and somebody wrote out these questions, I believe in the rooms, I just wanted to make sure that we, that we.
We have, we have about 40 plus these, plus three, so we'll get these out there. If we have some.
One minute.
One minute left. I'll use it, I'm sorry, yeah.
Hi Brett, I'm Stina Schrevels. I really appreciate everybody coming and speaking out today, and you extending the time, I have to say it was great, eye-opening for me, I haven't come to enough of these forums. The one thing I would like to suggest, I think for my kids who are both in the high school, one of the best nights of high school is the battle of the classes, and I think we need more fun in the high school. Like, I really think we need to figure out ways to bring the class together, so that the kids who graduate from Milburn High School, they have a really good feeling about it, that it wasn't just a place of stress. And one of the things that I've discussed with all of you before then was this bringing a homecoming back, and that this way this brings, you know, the alumni back too, so that they can have good feelings about the school as they want to. I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that process, so we need a little more fun in our high school.
Thanks so much.
One quick thing, Stina, in response to that, just so you know, Dr. Myron is sitting in the room as well, but as part of the student liaison committee at the high school level, there is a subgroup of students that work with board members and staff members that are focused on improving the social climate in the school, and that's been one of the things that is on their agenda in terms of bringing more fun activities and experiences to this everybody, but.
I've been in the seat of hot men, but what I, what I can say to you is, yes, as of yesterday, I was still PTOC president of Milburn High School, and Dr. Myron does know that I have discussed, or talked about, at least brought up, homecoming at Milburn High School a few times, and, you know, it's definitely something to consider. I can't carry that flag anymore, Brett. Feel free to take that agenda on, and I know you'll get support from a lot of us, because I think it is a fun thing. My high school had it, it's definitely something that I remember even at my age, and I think we should have some consideration.
Okay, now a motion to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Jaffe, it's a shame, one favor.